That's not straight.
I don't agree. That was so minor.
He was walking backwards down the hall.
Where's the camera? Because I was just. So we'll sit on our record on tables.
How's it going?
Shoulders in my picture.
Yeah, pretty good.
I had to bring it back because. That William.
They start serving.
Don't.
Let me go here. Get a little rager. It feels like.
Call me, just call out. But I can tell you.
Smart practice.
I hope I might.
I'll say your spot.
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't have any more trees down.
Yeah.
The same guy else needed agenda.
I'm just gonna stand up.
Have extras.
It's what we used to do.
David used Jack Olsary just all of the rewards. Master of none. You sell your hand. Yeah, he sold. All right, would you please rise so we can do the invitation and the question? I've asked Commissioner Nelson to.
Let pray. Most holy God, Father, we give you praise and glory and honor this afternoon, Father, and tell you that you are the King of kings and the Lord of all lords, Father. Father, be with our county and bless our county and be with the Commissioners Court this afternoon, Father, and give us wisdom and discernment. Holy Father, to make the right decisions and correct decisions for Vansant County and the citizens that we represent. Father, continue to bless our men and women and the military, Father, especially those that are in harm's way. And bless this county, Father, and we'll give you praise and you're all in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. We pledge the American flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank the flag. The honor of the flag. I pledge allegiance to the United States, one state, under God, one and endless. All right. I call to order. Uh, the meeting of Vansant County Commissioners Court on February the eighth at one. Of three. Uh, PM. And, uh, I just would like to, uh, we do have a forum. All the Commissioners are present. And I just would, uh, I'll, I'll talk about it now. Yes. So item number two, discuss, consider dispensing of the reading of the minutes for the meeting of the Commissioners Court and approval of the same for January the fourth, twenty twenty-three and January eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. Go move the motion. There's second.
Second, there's.
All right, motion made in second. All those in favor, say aye.
Uh-huh.
All opposed. All right, motion passes. And item number three, discuss, consider approval of county bills for payment as admitted. Motion made in second, any discussion? Uh, all those in favor, say aye. Post. Like sign. Motion passes. All right, item number. Uh, four, discuss, consider ratifying, uh, county bills as submitted. Your motion by Commissioner Melton is your second. Second, taken by Commissioner Barton. All those are in the discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Uh-huh.
Uh, all opposed, like sign. Motion passes. Item number five, general announcements. I will just, uh, like to tell you that we're playing, uh, uh, musical courtrooms. For a little while, while the district courtroom is in need of repair, they, uh, started to go back into it and use it even when it was under construction. And the day that they moved back in, it rained very heavily and the roof started leaking again, so they had to move out. So, uh, we hope to have it, uh, resolved and fixed in the next. Three to four weeks. So we may be, uh, hopping around with the Commissioners Court in order to give, uh, the District Court, uh, stable place to meet. So, any other announcements, general announcements? All right, now we'll move on to number six, public comments. Do we have anybody sign up for public comments?
Yes, sir.
Nobody signed up. All right, we'll move on. Item number seven. Uh, discuss and consider allowing the county judge to sign, to e-sign a body agreement with Motorola Solutions. To provide watch guard video type service for showing office personnel body cameras. That is the motion, but I believe that this, uh, has already been approved in prior Commission for me.
Right, it was, uh, it was perked in budget, budgeted for the first year of it. In my budget, um, and it was approved. One point last year, we approved it, or they approved it. Okay, so we just didn't have it all together to be signed at the time.
All right, is there a motion to approve it? Motion by Commissioner Pratt is your second, second by Commissioner Pearson. Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Uh-huh.
Opposed, like sign. Motion passed. Okay, item number eight, discuss, consider certificate paying for dispatchers, tailors, and law enforcement of officers. And I believe the sheriff is going to do that for him.
Yes, sir. Hey, good afternoon. Uh, want to talk to you a little bit, uh, proposal we got, uh, wants to do to increase pay rate for our deputies. Uh, back in, um, we'll be back. There's, we're here to see court approval for two institutes specifically for various levels of professional license, their detention officers, dispatchers, and peace officers who hold the Texas Commission on Law Enforcement. The state agency regulates law enforcement. That also covers for detention officers, jailers, professional license, they have to. Or any free career, career fields, special training is required in order to obtain the license due to the state. These career fields are as a basic, intermediate, advanced, the master license, that's for each of these career fields, dispatchers, again, correctional officers, and law enforcement. And the way you get those certificates is based off service time. In-service training, training related to your field of work, and also it could be off formal education, or a different formula, Melanie's gonna go into, Captain Williams is gonna go into some more detailed matters. In early January this year, I asked Captain Williams to, uh, start looking into local sheriff's offices, like our contiguous counties, counties around in our area, to see what the pay was, and also for local police departments, put, put their paid or peace officers. Attached, you will find a salary she compiled from the research under attachment one. This is what we started looking at in early January. Then on January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three, the Coffin County Commissioners Court approved a lateral transfer pay to track the place Coffin County Sheriff's Office. So this lateral transfer pay on top of their base salary they're offering to these inter-level positions. They added another ten thousand dollars a year for, uh, peace officers with five years of experience. So attached, you'll find the post of the Coffin County Sheriff's Office advertising a ten thousand dollar lateral transfer for any peace officer with five years of consecutive experience to come to work at their office. The same post offered a five thousand dollar lateral transfer for dispatchers and detention officers. The post also lists the, uh, starting salaries of these positions, and that's under attachment two. So they were about, oh, I think eleven thousand dollars a year annual salary. This is just base salary. This doesn't include like certificate pay, we're talking about the data request we're making. This is base salary, they're about eleven thousand dollars where we were, uh, starting salary, and they just added ten thousand dollars in payment. For all people with five more years of experience to come over. And ongoing to retain a current employee, if you'd like to start, they ask you to have the court's approval for the certificate pay. A detailed list where our requests attached under attachment number three. As part of our request, we'd like to include full-time peace officers employed with Vansant County District Attorney's Office and County Fire Marshal's Office. Our current budget holds sufficient funds from that salaries of unfilled positions to fund this request. We have spoken with District Attorney Tommy Curry and Fire Marshal Sean Davis, they both were in favor of this request. Both have the understanding of funding for the certificate paid, their employees will need to be funded by their offices in the coming budget year. Right now, we have surplus salary in order for this year, let's do the first. Third of the year, at the end of, uh, January, we have existing money right now to pay for this request already on hand. This isn't projected over the rest of fiscal year, that money's already on hand, and there will be money left after the certificate paid, and last year there will be money left over from that. We had a meeting, was that week before last? We met with Commissioner, with Judge Reese, and with Commissioner Melton, and with Representative of Texas Association Counties. Also, uh, Jessica, uh, was with us, HR, and Sandy. And we discussed these things. I was looking also trying to add the constables in this, with the constables to get this. We had the money to do that, to add them to certificate pay. We were told at the time that we couldn't do elect, the difference is we couldn't do it for elected officials, like myself, but for them, it couldn't be at a nurse hours in, in mid-budget year like this, it'd be done in budget time. The difference being, law enforcement employees were asking for, or hired employees. The others, myself and the constables, would be elected officials. So they said at this time, we couldn't do it, we could do this for the law enforcement employees in the county. So I'm gonna ask Melanie to go in a little more detail on this, on what we're asking for, and that is reattachment three. Um, just a little side note. Before the month over, we're gonna lose, uh, two more of our deputies, one is going to Smith County, then hired over there, gives no shit, I hear it's going. And the button maybe blew internally, one of our employees maybe moved over to the office.
So here, this page here shows what, uh, Sandy came up with this, or with this. That shows how much money we have in last salaries for the remainder of this budget year so far, hopefully, what we're gonna use for this budget year. The one number, page one. The current employees of the Vansant County Sheriff's Office, I broke it down into. Each division, the jail, dispatch, and law enforcement, and how many of each hold a basic, intermediate, advanced, and a master's license. There's twenty-seven total certificates filed by the Sheriff's Office. What we're asking for, for the certificate paid for those. Levels are for a basic license. The incentive being five hundred dollars a year, whenever you first go to work for the Sheriff's Office as a dispatcher or jailer, or if you're fresh out of the academy as a deputy. You have to spend a year and go through FTO training and orientation before you can obtain your basic license. So for somebody that, you know, we have several, we have a few new deputies that are, you know, straight out of the academy. We've got one that's an FTO right now, and it would be a year before he would be eligible for basic pay. Basic certificate pay. The intermediate, we're asking for a thousand dollars a year, advanced, twenty-five hundred a year, and master, four thousand a year. So I broke it down under that, with the remaining of the budget year, how much it would cost us with the certificates that our current employees hold. And the total payout for. Well, the total payout for the remainder of the budget year is what it would end up costing us for remainder of the budget year. For basic certificates is three hundred and forty-six dollars and a bit of cleaning cents. For all the ones that we had that hold the basic. The total for the remainder of the year would be two thousand four hundred and twenty-three dollars and five cents. And each one of them is broken down like that, to get a grand total for the remainder of the budget year for our current employees. Of forty-six thousand three hundred and eighty-four dollars and fifty-nine cents. And that's well below what we have in last salaries.
The research she did to calculate these numbers, basically, I think pretty much all the agencies around us, and even local agencies, they had some type of certificate pay, longevity pay, um, their people millions. She's got an example here, it's Rockwall County, Henderson County, Smith County pays, and also. Special activities, yeah.
Yeah, we hadn't gotten to the specialized yet, but just the certificate pay, and Smith County probably is. One of the highest ones around from all of the research that I did. But we went with their number based on the fact that our salaries are so far below what everybody else's was, that we were trying to get the biggest incentive for our guys that we could get.
Another thing with this certificate pay, what it does is based off the service time, and it, the, the, the team education hours that you get. The quicker, the more hours you take, there's a minimum amount of hours that have to keep, take, keep your license, additional training they take. Dangles that carry it out there to go on and finish that training and get your next level certificate, because each one of those, then you're gonna get a pay increase that goes along with it. They can maintain their license for a minimum number of hours, if they're going to get this initial training, the incentive is to get that, to get the certificate paid with the increase.
I had that on make remarks to me about, you know, why haven't you been in it this long, and, you know, I've asked them, why haven't you been in it this long, and you only hold the basic? Well, there's not any more money involved for, you know, going through all of that, so what's?
The money decided that each of the minimum hours, go and sit it for, and go on and finish the training.
But then you're gonna ask for this to come budget period?
Yes.
I believe the purpose of doing it now is to try to retain the people we already have hired. Because there's now incentive, next county over for them to move.
Yes.
Uh, huge financial incentive.
I would hope we would get other employees attracted here for this. But my intention to this is retain the ones we've got. Because when you look at this market, what salary, this are available, these other agencies, they're, uh, somewhere. Pretty good increase of all the pay.
And every, every county around us has certificate pay and longevity pay.
Instead pay.
Instead pay.
Yes, it's just a first step on toward getting there, we just have a little bit of surplus money looking away there from the.
The pages four through eight, just breakdown for the Fire Marshal's Office and the VA's Office that we're asking to make, including this as well.
And the reason we're doing that is because it has to be consistent with all county employees and all departments.
All law enforcement, all law enforcement being, you know, on equal playing ground with it.
Yes.
Well, that brings up an issue. You've got, uh, you, Mr. Carter, for an example, when he was building maintenance and everything, he was holding peace officers license, certificates. So. The way we're doing this, not, not that you would have, Joe, but you would have had the, the, the privilege to come and say, hey. Your plan certificate paid out there, I hold this same certificate.
And I see what you're saying, yes. But I wouldn't work in a full-time position, that's what we're asking for, the full-time positions.
Full-time peace officer.
Yes, yes, full-time peace officer.
Not as a reserve position, a full-time position.
Yeah. Does that make sense?
So, yes, but I don't know how. The HR person is gonna handle, handle that on, uh, on, on this pain, on the bench. That's a bridge we've got to work off of, I'm saying, I'm not, I'm not trying to call it controversy.
With or without, there's a, there's a system that I can go into, it's called T-Clubs, and that's where all T-hole. Stuff is listed where I can look and see how many hours an officer or a jailer or dispatcher continuing education they have, what classes they've taken, what certificates they hold. And we would provide that to HR to verify that, you know. Commissioner Pearson holds this license, and this is what his start.
I hope about that, you made my example, I'm not, but I, I don't want this.
Right, because you're not, you're not employed as a full-time jailer, so it wouldn't be extended.
We would have to make it related to jobs. It has to be related to job classification.
Yes, and I appreciate you bringing it up, because that's what we're here for. I want to make this work, make it doable, and not cause other issues, bro. That's, that's what we're.
I don't want to cause a problem by trying.
We don't, we don't want to either, yeah.
We move on to the specialized certificate paying. And what this is, there's different certifications that a law enforcement or dispatcher or jailer can, can carry, um, like an FTO certification. You know, they're trained to train, they hold a certification to train other people that, you know, the new people that come in, mental health peace officers are just a couple. Um, the specialized certificate pay, what we're asking for is to pay a minimum of three certifications. You can have fifteen, but we're only gonna pay you for three. And the certificates are subject to the approval of the department head, they have to be related to the job that, that you're hired to do. Like an arson investigator, we're not gonna give certificate pay to somebody at the Sheriff's Office for an arson investigator, because that's not our full-time, that's not what we're focused on. Um, what we're asking for in that area is for fifteen dollars a month for each specialized certificate with a maximum of three certificates. Uh, the following, or the ones that we currently have, or are suggesting to be put on the approved list, is bilingual. Instructor, FTO, mental health peace officer, SWAT, but you must be an active member of the SWAT team to receive that pay. Emergency medical dispatch, jail mental health officer, new supervisors, arson investigator, and civil process. So a breakdown of. That. One special, you have one specialized certificate, it would be a hundred and eighty dollars a year in addition that you would get. Two would be three sixty, and the max of three would be five hundred and forty dollars a year that you'd be eligible for. So it's on page ten, I broke that down with the remainder of the budget yearly. We've got one, two, or three specialized certificates, how much that would be. I went through and checked everybody's certificates, and with. What I've come up with, the grand total for the remainder of the budget year is four thousand two hundred and thirty-six dollars and ninety-nine cents.
What's the issue?
Anytime, if the certificate, the certification is called new supervisor, but anytime that you're promoted into a supervisor position in law enforcement or to jail or. Uh, and I believe dispatch is included in that, you have to go through a, I believe it's a twenty-four hour certification. Kind of a supervisor leadership type thing. But it's an actual certification that you can hold. So the remaining pages that are in your packets, it just goes to show what, like a basic telecommunicator or dispatcher. How many hours you have to have to obtain your basis, and what classes that are required that you take to get your basic license, and it goes through the intermediate, advanced, and. The, uh, masters.
If I didn't mention during Coffin County, where they did this week before last, what the parish report did, when they did the ten thousand dollar lateral transfer for peace officers. For law enforcement officers, they did the same thing for detention officers and jailers, but they offered them a five thousand dollar lateral transfer to come over to the county ward.
As a jailer, to obtain your master jailer license. At ten years, you had, you have to have four thousand hours of continuing education or training. At twenty years, you have had twelve, twelve hundred dollars. So, I mean, it's not an easy feat to obtain, law enforcement is, is the same, their hours are pretty up there.
You're not gonna go in and take a couple of classes over a week or two, and be able to get the next trip, and it still takes the time, this effort, to get there, and it can be done.
Then. It's the same for a master peace officer, you have four thousand hours in ten years. Or it goes up to twenty years and twelve hundred. So, I mean, there's numbers in between there, but.
What, what does the counties pay? Uh, there's specials certificates, I don't see Rockwall, you don't have listed, have the county.
Yeah, I don't have those, I've got the, uh, I've got some of the PDs around that, that have approved specialized certificate, like Greensland PD, they do K nine, Spanish. FTO, mental health, Safe Vic, and SRT. May MPD does K nine, FTO, investigator, and bilingual.
When we started this early January, what we actually did is we were just starting to pull numbers, see, we're, uh, in the. In the December, we were quarterway through this year, then January, and we were third way through, we had a little bit of surplus money to actually start pulling these numbers. Then Coffin County pulls up and they drop ten thousand dollars on the table, the peace officers come over, and five thousand for dispatchers and for detention officers. And so we just like this up and would make a request, that's when we met Judge and Commissioner, the tax representative. And, uh, that's my one here today, so, so that stuff hasn't gotten pulled yet, but, you know, I'm trying to grab a waiting queue on the table.
I'm just thinking for the time being, I think what it stayed with the county, what they do is they're trying to go city, and we're never gonna.
Yes. Yes.
Like Greensland PD, there's this twenty-five dollars a month per certificate, so we're actually less, if the fifteen were less than what theirs are.
Have the counties paying this certificate.
I'll have to go back.
I mean, uh, uh, certification type, or specialized training.
Any of the county, I'm not sure about the counties.
It has been out there, sure, so, you know, you promote supervisor one week, and you need to promote him the next week.
Yes.
You know, and.
There's been.
It'll be kind of a. Hard joke for, uh, Jessica to keep up with that. Taking off and taking on.
I hope to eventually get a point where the turnover slows down, and we level out, and we have people in the positions, and that's what we're looking at, so, that's, I can understand that too, because it can be a. Bookkeeping nightmare. Any questions?
I will, I, I think I, I think we're gonna go with, we've got the nine unions, the leaders of Smith County, ladies. That's the kind of lump sum there, that's, we're setting a little way out. Going to Smith County. But, but you're so underpaid.
Yes.
Yeah, I can see why we need to do that. But then, during the budget. Yeah, I can see why we need to do that. But then, during the budget year, we, you know, there may be some adjusting.
We, we can start to do some adjusting, yes, I wouldn't ever want to take completely away, I could do some adjusting, and I'm trying to get away right now, like I said, put more money in, majority of our people are younger in their careers across the board, in all three of those fields, different professions, and, uh, so, I mean, a- actual outlay of money, the grand scheme of things, it'll help some people out there, but there'll be some of, a little bit, some of a little more, but the majority of them are going to be lesser time in their careers, whole lower students.
It should have been the greatest, I won't trade it off.
Right. In theory, yes.
Though, I, I believe everybody up here knows the struggle to go through.
Yes.
And I, I think what, what I mean, I think what I mean, I don't know what's working, I mean, for the budget time, what, I, I would not take anything away from anybody.
Yes.
But it may affect the amount of ways that we can.
If, if we need to adjust those, we could, we could sort of do that.
It might, it may prohibit, prohibit us from doing another five thousand dollars a year. I don't know, we don't know until we get in budget time. But we'll, we'll have to see when the, because we don't know what kind of new money we're going to have.
Yes, we just need to make it clear when we implement it, that this is through the end of the budget year. Yes.
And that everything resets, uh, for the new budget, yeah.
But I'd like, I'd like to do my best to keep something, whether the pay fluctuates or not, to keep building on this. They do longevity pay, or several places other counties do also, and, uh, it's, it's going to be expensive, but we just have so much turnover work, it seems like we're constantly training new people, some of us leveled off, but we're pretty short on deputies right now, and.
Well, I, I'm.
The training probably costs more than the actual certificate. Yes, 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 sir.
I'm, I'm not doing it till, till the end of the year, I'm.
Yes.
I, I'm good with the, with what you're saying from now on, but what does that, it may affect how much percentage we can do.
Yes. Okay, we're on board with that, I understand that, yes.
I, I don't think you should ever give something to somebody.
And that's, that's the bottom line is, I, I wouldn't want to bore you. Sir.
Um, if there's something I wanted to give these there, which is an offer.
Yeah.
That's what I talked about, and you're talking about, you may have to just adjust the budget, you know, we'll see.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I, I, I just make the motion that we can go ahead and pay, uh, Vansant County Sheriff's Department, uh, intermediate pay certificate of one thousand dollars a year, advanced certificate pay, twenty-five hundred dollars a year, and a master's certificate at four thousand dollars a year.
Law enforcement, it has to be in law enforcement, not sheriff. Because we have.
The law enforcement personnel works with sheriff's.
Well, someone, I work for sheriff.
Because these, these other law.
I'm talking about peace officers.
Yeah, just county peace officer.
Yeah.
Yes, I just don't leave these other, like, two P A investigators and.
All peace officers.
Yes.
In Vansant County itself, no negative official.
Yes. Right, and you know, I just want to leave the amount of control in our own little islands out here, we're going to include the cost.
But you let down the jailers and not dispatchers, the jailers, dispatchers.
They all hold the same, same level licenses, they have the basic, intermediate, advanced, and masters for dispatchers, jailers, and for peace officers.
They're all same as your.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
And the same type of thing, it all requires service time and training on top of their.
All right, and then also, uh, your motion to say to implement certificate pay plan, which is.
That's been a good and a bad.
I will get you to dial.
I have to get you.
Appreciate it.
Okay. So, Virgil's made the motion to, uh, implement the certificate pay plan as presented by the sheriff's office. So, sound right? Motion was, is there a second? Do that much.
I'll say.
Okay, Commissioner Barton, uh, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye, and those opposed like aye. Motion passed, thank you, Sheriff.
You're welcome, thank you very much, I appreciate you, yes, of course, appreciate it, thank you.
All right, moving on to item number nine, discuss consider appointing James Bookhouse as a reserve constable for precinct three. Who is making that principle? Oh, that would be Jeff Pollan. He is not.
Well, I don't, I don't, I'm very confused on that, so, I haven't been here very long, this is the first time that, that, uh, a foreign reserve has ever come to court in my situation. Uh, if that needs to be done, we've got a lot out there that shouldn't be working, because it hadn't come to court. So, I, I'm, I'm, I don't have a better problem with him having the, I think he's authorized six, is that right?
About five.
And I think that's all, Jeff.
I'm not going to table it.
My motion to table.
Okay. And, uh, to get clarification, whether or not we need to do that or not. Okay, most of us made the tables, I mean, good, okay, all the favors, aye. All of the opposed, I signed. Motion passes. Item number ten, discussing approval of Vansant County Historical Commission twenty twenty-two year-end report, and I believe we have Elvis Allen present to do that. Would you like to read your report? Or would you like me to read it?
Oh, you're probably better ready than me.
Okay, what, what was that line? Well, I, I think, I think Elvis wants to read it, because it's a lot of stuff. I think he's proud of what they've done. I'm, I'm proud of what y'all, I'm gonna let you read it, okay? This is what you presented to us. Tell us what y'all did. You want me to read it? I would refer you to. She's like. No, I read it. I said, what did your report? That in the estimation of the Vansant County Historical Commission, both individually and as a group, we have completed the year twenty twenty-two in a successful manner. With the exception of one, we've met all ten regular meetings with the forum of the eleven committees, most met regularly. Two new committees were created in the year twenty twenty-three. We created a history programs committee for the purpose of presenting talks to home and private school to educate children of our rich local history. Two talks were given, uh, with praise to the presenters. The second committee was the photo archive committee, dedicated to the proper method of archiving a large donation of historic local photos. We continue to monitor the historical markers that have refurbished the Ash, Ashbury Cemetery historical marker. Five historical marker applications were submitted in twenty twenty-two, four are in progress, and one was not selected this year, but will be resmitted. The publication committee is working on publishing a series of books covering the history of the Vansant County schools. First book covering precinct three is nearing completion. At the request of the local clinic, historical county photos were provided for display in their clinic. Projects completed in twenty twenty-two are as follows. Install a plaque for the nineteen, excuse me, the eighteen ninety-five courthouse eagle, uh, that is located, it's right outside of here, if you haven't seen it. Install and dedicate a plaque honoring the service of Adrian Anglin, a citizen of the Republic of Texas and Texas Ranger, cleaned and repaired historical marker for Adrian Anglin in Ashbury Cemetery, completed, uh, the partnering project of Edgewood Historical Society with the dedication of the replica of the first Canton courthouse and the dedication of the refurbished poor farm, caboose, calaboose, excuse me, and water tower. Uh, how many of y'all seen the, uh, replica courthouse, or even been in it? And, okay, it's, it's, it's very interesting, you need to go see it, I put it heritage bar. Uh, not number, if I gave two tours across the county, down to historic cattle trail, later used and named Dallas to Shreveport Road. A talk was given on civil war reconstruction in Vansant County. Texas Business Treasure Award was presented to Murray Motors, and two are in progress. VC, C calendars were again published with all five hundred calendars sold, and an additional one hundred, or Texas Legislature History Book was completed. The commission once again received a distinguished service award. All commission members are grateful for the opportunity to serve county and most appreciative of the support of the commissioner in court, signed Elvis Allen, Vansant County Historical Commission. And I just want to commend them, they have done an incredible job, and I'm looking forward to going on one of those tours, you know, to Dallas to Shreveport Road or in any of the others, so we'll see what happens.
I would like to mention one thing, to call this in case, and I swear to my, I go, no doubt, no doubt for dear members, uh, and, and every odd number of years, there's one, uh, with, that, that, for, for once, we're committing against one of them. And the state historical commission requires that the county judge send a new, uh, list of their warranties to them, and that was, this is.
Okay. You know when the deadline is for that?
No, it's usually in February, but I don't know what day it is, she called, I did, I did get a. Is, okay, well, she led us.
Yeah.
Thank goodness.
Okay, all right, well, thank you so much. Is there a motion to accept the report from this?
Thank you for.
All right, Commissioner Pratt makes a motion, Commissioner Pearson second, the only favorite, right? Uh, is there any discussion? All the favors say aye, opposed like aye, motion passes. Item number eleven, discuss instead authorizing cell fireworks for Texas Independence Day, beginning February the twenty-fifth, uh, two thousand twenty-three, and ending midnight, March second, twenty twenty-three. Okay, motion is made in second, and we're going to have the fire marshal, might, you have any comments?
Oh, I've been in court, nothing, this isn't anything unusual, this is just, there's three standard days, the state says that anybody can sell fireworks for permitted. Uh, this is one of the three that allows for a county to have your discretion on whether they want to allow that day to sell or not within their county. Uh, so it's, it's pretty standard. I don't, I don't expect that we can see much fireworks sales during that time, but, you know, if somebody wants to do it, uh, see if we're all with it at all.
Okay, second. All right, uh, Commissioner, two minutes and seconds, uh, any further discussion? And so I'd say, we do, we do, uh, require a permit for a fireworks, uh, sale, correct?
Yes, sir, it's an annual, so. Permit for the year they can sell it, you know, the.
Fine, so, uh, all those in favor say aye, and opposed like aye, motion passes. Item number, well, discuss to consider approval, a request from the Little Hope More Water Supply Corporation for Vansant County to sponsor a twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four community block development grant uh, application to the Texas Department of Agriculture. Uh, and I, I'd just like to say, this is something we do for most all of the water supplies, they, they have to go through the county in order to apply for grants, and, uh, we, uh, we help administer the funds for that. So, this is one grant that I think, uh, five hundred thousand dollars, uh, and we, we don't, uh, participate, we don't have to spend any money, we just administrate, is what it amounts to, so. We, we do try to share them around in different, uh, Little Hope Water, one ninety grains or anything, and it's, we spent a percent, root failed, and, yeah, so we try to spread them around. Right. So, they, they're, they're responsible for the actual application and, and, uh, administrative, and we, uh, we kind of help them, uh, handle the money part of it, finances of it, so. Is there a motion to, uh, approve the request? A little help on it. Motion made by Virgil Melton, no, Commissioner Melton, is there a second? Second, second by Commissioner Barton, all those, uh, any more discussion? Uh, all those in favor say aye, uh, opposed like aye, motion passes. Item number thirteen, discuss consider appointments to ETCO. Okay. We have, since Commissioner, uh, West rolled off of the, uh, court, we have to fill the positions that he filled while he was, uh, a commissioner, and he was on the board, and he was also, uh, on the executive committee. There's two positions to fill, executive committee and the board of directors. And I believe I talked through that.
Yes.
Okay, and, uh, Commissioner Pearson is willing to serve on the board of directors, and I'm willing to serve on the executive committee if someone wants to.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, motion made, and, uh, motion made by Commissioner Melton, second to my Commissioner Pratt. Any further discussion?
So, I thought the county judge was going to automatically on the executive.
On the board, not on executive, no.
No.
On the board, not on, not on, I make that.
Okay.
So, uh, all those in favor say aye, opposed like aye, all right, motion passes. Item number fourteen, discuss to consider revisions to the Vansant County installation of culvert permit. Now, it would be, uh, judge, yes, I put this on the agenda, uh, I, uh, recommend that we put culverts, continue to keep culverts on, and put driveways. I've had with, with subdivisions coming in and, and building that's going on in Vansant County, I've had several problems with people just throwing a bunch of dirt and shit. And, uh, that's our culvert driveway, that's our driveway. Of course, when it rains and floods, well, it backs up water and we can't wash it out the road, so I, I think that it would be better if we put, added the culverts and driveways in the county driveway. So, I'm making a motion that we have, we amend the culvert policy to include driveways. Do we need to make any specifications within the document on the construction of the driveway? It's all in you. Okay. And is it possible that they put in a driveway without a culvert? Yeah, you can't put a driveway, but, but, you said, commissioner, or, or some of the, or someone, somebody's got to come out there and look at it, and give the okay. So, my understanding is the only modification to the policy is to add in driveway at any time it says, and culvert, or says culvert. Is that correct? Culverts and driveways. Any further discussion? Well, actually, there's no motion yet, I, I think, did not motion? Okay, I had to go second, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion made in second, is there any further discussion? Not, uh, all of the favors say aye, all of the opposed like aye, motion passed. All right, item number, uh, fifteen, discuss to consider solicitation of road and bridge material for the contract period of May first, twenty twenty-three, through April thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. And I believe Sandy is.
We just, we just need permission from the board, uh, within the process, uh, putting out rubber review journal. And we've always seen the packet by email, and we call, uh, we do need you to re-read that packet, and you can change this. Uh, it would probably, which can get paid on, or what they.
I'm not.
All right, motion is in nine second, any discussion? I said you only, uh, send those packages after the people have requested them, right?
Uh, we have a bid list downstairs.
Yeah, the people that tell them, the bids is.
I mean, if, if, if you have anyone that you need to send that package, you just say.
Okay.
Email us the address, and we'll get it. And some people will refer that via email, so, you know, we can do, either mail or.
Sandy, what I'm thinking about, don't forget, I, I coach them, I still been working from home. And, you know, one year, we sent it to them, and they didn't get a response, and then one particular gentleman was supposed to know about. Let me talk about that.
Two seconds.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor of, uh, allowing the bid for road bridge, uh, materially for the contract period of May first, twenty twenty-three through April thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Through April thirtieth, twenty twenty four, um, say aye, uh, opposed like sign. Motion passes, item number sixteen, discuss and consider solicitation of in for road and rich fuel. For the contract year June third, twenty twenty three through May thirty first, twenty twenty four. And I will, for Sandy again, please go.
Let the sign with exception of it now people. That, uh, for road bridge.
Okay. Is there a motion? All right, and second. Uh, all those in favor are in discussion. All those in favor say aye, opposed like sign, motion passes, item number seventeen, discuss and approve. Van Zandt County Emergency Services District, number four financial statement for the year ending September thirty, twenty twenty two. So, we, we get a chance to review it.
I look at it, the chief should have the.
Uh, is there a motion to approve? All right, word of motion made by Commissioner Melton, seconded by. All those in favor say aye. Yeah, I'm sorry.
I, I struggled with it a little bit, not that there's anything wrong with it. But. Sounds like something ought to be worded different, that we're accepting this. For, and we put in our minutes and everything, but I can't sit here and say that I approved that anybody or report. If there's a mistake in there, I don't know it's in there, but there could be, but I don't, it's like Danny, Danny turns this stuff in for us to. To accept it in his minutes, but. We're not necessarily approving his report, he just submitting it for records, but the auditors wanted to have to. Review that and.
Well, this is an auditor's report. That we're approving. It's a, the independent auditing firm that will be in the numbers and verify that they were correct, that they were accurate. So we're, we're taking the auditor's word, that it's good, so, but it's a certified order. If it was like a monthly report, I would, I would agree with you, you know, but this is an auditor. Then they paid to, uh, actually do the audit of the financials. So, we know that, we know that the numbers are accurate. Uh, we may not agree with the numbers, you know, how this, wasn't how they do it, but we know that the numbers presented are accurate.
Well, we know that, we know that they're saying they're accurate. I have no way, Steve Pearson has no way of verifying if they're planning to act. If they have, he might have mistaken, I don't know. So I accepted report. But if there, if it winds up being mistaken there and something comes up, I don't want to come back on Van Zandt County. Saying, well, y'all, y'all approved that thing.
Well, I think, I think that's why we have an independent auditor. Uh, required that the, the E S Ds have an independent auditor to audit their books. To make sure that the, the numbers are accurate, because the auditor would not, would not submit a report proving. Saying that the numbers are accurate if they found any discrepancies.
Oh, really?
Yeah. It's not a rubber stamp, because they are liable, if, if, if the numbers are not correct. They could become liable. All right, any further discussion? All those in favor of accepting. Can we, my motion second?
Yes, sir.
I, I think I made a motion. Yes, all right, uh, all those in favor of accepting the, uh, report as submitted, say aye, uh, opposed like sign. Motion passes, item number. Eighteen, discuss consider the sale of Van Zandt County, uh, precinct for equipment through, uh, Renee Banks option.
Yeah, I just have a lot of them, we have a lot of equipment, not, wouldn't say a lot, some. That we just never use, and it's just sitting there, and, uh. But we'll pay interest on it, so I just kind of want to get rid of it, we don't use it, we haven't used it in a long time, so. There's no sense for us to, we sit there.
And, uh, I would like to point out that majority of it is over twenty years old.
Yeah, it's old.
One of the tree goes good, so.
Yeah.
Have a tree growing through?
Yeah.
Does the tree go with it?
Well, because on which it won't pay for the trees, yes.
We could have two, one we took off the courthouse, and one we took off this. To the machine.
Yes. All right, so is there a motion to, uh. Allow the option of this equipment?
I'm motion.
All right, I'll say, all right, motion made by Commissioner Barton, seconded by Commissioner Melton, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye, opposed like sign. Motion passes, item number nineteen is, uh, discuss and consider replacement of note through truck signs. On Van Zandt County Road, fifteen twelve.
Yeah, Joe, I have that one on there. Felt my attention, there's a lot of traffic from the emergency cut through the man down that road, sit going around. On the interstate, there's a lot of damage on the road, so. Put these signs up, you know, the new farm owner. I'll make a motion to prove placement of the drug sign on.
Commissioner Pratt makes a motion, Commissioner Pearson, seconds, any voter discussion? All those in favor say aye, all opposed like sign. Motion passes, item number twenty, discuss considering setting a speed limit on Van Zandt County Road twenty nine oh eight. At thirty five miles per hour.
Yes, sir, this is in precinct two. Got some speeders on twenty nine oh eight, got a straightaway of about a mile and a half. And citizens complained, they signed a petition, I make a motion that the fit speed limit thirty five miles an hour on twenty nine oh eight.
All right, motion has been made, is there a second? Discussion?
We keep doing this one at a time, we'll get them all done.
What is the current speed limit, or is it not posted?
No, it's not posted. If, if it's not posted, it's fifty miles an hour.
What is our?
And it, it didn't now, if not posted, it's fifty miles an hour, is it sixty, okay.
Ballard County Road.
Yes, sir. So. They fly, if it's not, they gonna fly anyway, probably, but. We're gonna put them up, and Sheriff gonna do his best to do what he can, to try, that's it, do what you can.
All right, and further discussion? Uh, all those in favor of, uh, setting speed limit thirty five miles an hour on Van Zandt County Road twenty nine eight. Uh, say aye, opposed like sign. Motion passes, item number twenty one, discuss and consider plat approval for Parker Ridge Estates Base Two. Located on Van Zandt County Road twenty one twenty in precinct two.
Yeah, this is my, uh, my precinct, this is the, the base two, it's on Old Coffin. And the developer is, is finally. Done all the requirements he had to do, and everything is in order, and I make the motion that we accept this for filing purposes on.
All right, motion has been made, is there a second?
Second, here.
All right, uh, Commissioner Pearson, second, now discussion. Did you give us details of the size of the property and the number of blocks that they're going to?
It's about, uh, it's about forty one acre lots. Has a culvert sack, the road runs through it. A circle road runs through it with one culvert sack. And, uh. You don't have water to it, you're gonna have to dig a deep well. And be paved, roads will be paved up to, to the standard of the subdivision rules and regulations.
All right, any further discussion? Uh. Uh, motion has been made, second, all those in favor say aye, uh, all opposed like sign. Motion passes, item number twenty three, discuss and consider approval of alley abandonment, okay, to Van Zandt County Road thirty. To eleven and precinct three.
The initial idea, I mean, uh, this is in the old, uh.
All right, let me go back to twenty two. I am, I'm, uh, an eager achiever and try to pack it with that. Excuse me. Uh, item number twenty, discuss and consider plat approval for Toon Ranch, located on Van Zandt County Road thirty nine ten, precinct three.
It's mine, too, we've never done them out of order, you know, right? This is a, a nineteen block subdivision over on thirty nine ten, thirty nine ten, this. Is planned off of FM forty seven. Just north of, uh, oh, pretty old, uh, full wind, stuck there. And, uh, so. Sixteen, one acre lots or a little over one plus acre lots and two, two lots of, uh. Three point, uh, one of three point six four, one of three point four, old Terry Wither is in, uh. In the room, and he's put in his subdivision, uh, he turned in everything, we've sent it to Brian Abbott. He's looked at everything, uh, I will note, would want to note that the plat that Brian Abbott looked at. Yeah, changed just a little bit because Terry made a couple lots bigger. He didn't add a number of lots, he didn't add more lots after Brian looked at it, and he didn't make the lots any smaller. He made those, it's the bigger lot, wasn't it, Terry? The seventeen and eighteen went from one acre lots to, to over three acre lots. So it doesn't change, it didn't change our well-served letters or. Own size, newer letters or anything, but I wanted to make, bring that note out to the court. Uh. I'm making motion to accept this for filing purposes, and I have a copy here, if y'all would like to look at it.
All right, uh, motion made by Commissioner Pearson, seconded by Commissioner Barton, any further? All those in favor say aye, opposed like sign.
Let, let me keep, uh, excuse me, I, I left something there.
All right.
I've got to go back, uh, Mr. Wither has paid, uh. What a bit of money in advance to Mr. Abbott, so he's paid his five hundred dollar application fee. And the, to. On a subdivision like this, the county should read C fifteen hundred dollars. And fees, uh. Mr. W, Mr. Wither's paid five hundred to the county, and what he, what he pays to the, to that, that we won't have to pay Abbott. He's already paid in advance, it leaves twenty five dollars, so I make a motion that his approval fee be twenty five dollars. And then, and then Mr. Wither has paid his school fifteen hundred, if he brought that fifteen hundred to us, we would have paid Mr. Abbott. But we didn't have to, and that's the way we've done it in the past, and, and that's what we recommend, take them to Brian before you pay us. And let Brian look at it. So I make them, I want to add to my, my motion that the approval fee be twenty five dollars.
Amending motion.
Yes, amended that motion.
All right, motion has been amended to add the twenty five dollar fee. Uh, is there a second to the amended motion? All those in favor of the amended motion, say aye, all those opposed like sign. Okay, amended motion passes, now we go back to the main motion. Uh, or the amendment passes, now we go back, and all those in favor of the motion. Uh, say aye, all those opposed like sign. Motion passed. Okay. Now we go, uh, item number twenty three, discuss and consider approval of the alley abandonment located on Van Zandt County Road. Thirty two eleven precinct three.
Okay, this is part of the old Murdo Springs Township, uh, that was never incorporated, and. We've run this through the court before when Murdo Springs was part of precinct two, so Virgil's very aware of it. Uh, there's a gentleman over there that owns fifty one point seven three acres. And within it, fifty one point seven three acres, there is all of these planted, uh. Blocks and lots. And planted, uh, easements for alleys and streets. If Murdo Springs had incorporated, but I'm not sure I'm right, and so. The, uh, this owner of this land is asking if we, uh. Abandon all of the street and ri- alley right of ways. That, that is in this fifty one point seven three acres. And I have no problem with that, we, we, uh. But it says on here that this is just street and right away, it does not affect any utilities, because the utility line over. This, 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 uh. It, it moves over to there, they have that easement now, uh, the right to be there, there's a water line or a gas line. It's still not, uh, good to be there, I would, Dennis, I would like to make a comment. I, I would like to put that abandonment of all these, with the exception of the easements that affect. Down the road, that might affect County Road thirty two eleven.
Well, that's, I, I, you're not discussing, thirty two eleven is, was north, that, that was north of, what was the original town? Of Murdo Springs, it's pretty, it's, it's, it's restricted use, uh, there's not on the old map, it's not shown. Where the actual road is, there's not shown a road. It's just, you know, one part of that, our track of the land.
Yes.
So, uh, that, you know, so we can't, uh, deal with something that's not on the plat. Uh, the weird part about that one is, you know, that old plat doesn't have a formal dedication statement and everything else, and Murdo Springs was like some of these. It was an old town way back in the day, they drew up a map, and you wanted to buy one lot, or you wanted to buy a whole block, or you wanted to buy a whole section. They didn't care, and they wrote legal description for what they sold to the people. And they just didn't even bother with the streets that were never put in, or the alleys that were never put in, now, if you go forward, down. And I've had cases in Murdo Springs where there was a house built, brand new house built, and the finance company found out that one of those street right of ways ran through part of it. And they would finance the houses, and we got abandoned, you had a cheers bill, and I gave them, we got done. And we discussed way back when about who's doing the blanking, abandonment of anything that wasn't currently being used, but at the time, the judge and permission over there said, no, it's still a piece mail. And so every time we had one of these things, they'd come up here and we abandoned what's in there, we're not trying to live any property lines or change anybody's. What they own or anything else, we're just trying to get rid of any claim that the county might have, so that if they're doing financing and stuff or building something, they won't have a problem with it.
They, we're essentially abandoning the right of ways?
There, we have right of ways for all the streets they have.
Their streets and alleys run all through.
And there's no streets, now, there's no streets in out there.
Right.
There, they were proposed streets and alleys. And, and there will. There will never be a street and alley there. That, uh, that the county, right, here, unless it becomes a subdivision. Uh, my, my only concern, uh, Dennis, is that twenty seven point nine oh job, there's a little. On that north, very north line, that jogs towards thirty two eleven. I know it's all prescriptive over there, what you see is what you get, but I don't want this court. To wind up giving up a twenty seven point nine oh maybe.
We're, we're, we're talking about anything that's just inside the bounds of that, so anything that's, you know, everything that's north of that fence, which is where thirty two eleven is. You're not giving up anything.
Understand, I don't know where thirty two eleven.
Thirty two eleven is north of, this, this property, basically, look at it, I, I don't know what it depends on, but basically, it's running up to that north.
And you want to say that?
I don't, you're not, you're not giving up anything in thirty two eleven. This, this property doesn't go up that. The, uh, the old right of ways don't go up there, yeah, now that job, that's where thirty two eleven starts making that forty five bend. You're talking, you're talking about where that twenty seven, the twenty seven nine, when you're going, when you're coming off fifteen or four, going down thirty two eleven, when you're making that hard ends. That, that little twenty seven job, that's where that guy's probably cuts off that forty five degree bend in the road. That's what, that's what that bend is, that's what road actually makes, thirty two eleven makes that hard turn. I guess, if, if you were to clarify it more, if I actually put the heads of thirty two eleven on there, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, yes, yes.
But he's not asking, we're not asking to give up anything, uh, any kind of claim in thirty two eleven, it's just. What he's wanting is everything that's on the interior there to be navigated.
That's, that's why up here, I, I wish good for clarification, if you could, if we had passed this with the. With the exception that you just reprint this and say. With the exception of thirty two eleven, well, I, I'm willing to make a motion to give up all easements, abandon all easements within there. With the exception of anything that might affect thirty two eleven.
That, that's our, that's, that's all it asks. I said, he's just worried about everything from the inside, I brought this to the tension when the guy was buying the land, said, you know, Murdo Springs is tricky, you gotta be careful. And make sure that if you're, if they hadn't already been abandoned, you need to get it abandoned, you go to build a house in there, you build it in the wrong spot. Your finance company finds out, your, their house becomes worthless. They don't want you going in there with the bulldozer, trying to put in, you know, the way they look at it, their underwriters look at it, you could go in there and tear their house.
I'm making motion, we, um, abandon all of the county right of ways for the. I might propose we uh abandon all of the county right of ways for the for the streets and alleys. That lay that allow them this fifty one point seven three acres. And Murdo Springs takes it with the exception of anything, any right away that might affect County Road thirty two eleven. And this does not affect any utility easements that might be out there right now.
Okay, motion has been made second. Any further discussion?
Did you say streets? If we're not abandoning the streets or we're just abandoning the alleys?
Well, these are these are streets and alleys.
There's no streets in there right now, but there are easements. That's why I made a motion to abandon the right of way that we have for the non-existent streets and alleys. With the exception of anything that not affect thirty two eleven.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say I, all opposed like sign. Motion passes. All right, item number twenty four, is discuss consider filling the facilities management position.
Yes, sir, I'll put that on there. I I I want the court to decide if if there was time to uh look at. Uh, filling that positions since we don't have anyone in it. Uh, I believe myself that we have so much going on with all these buildings that we need somebody in that position. That's why the the previous court. Added that position to our to our.
What you're saying is the last guy that didn't do a good job, right?
Let me get back to it. So I I want to put it on there and and I I'll make a motion that that we move forward and uh and filling that position. At at whatever necessary, uh, I I believe it's been so long that we should probably repost. And uh and see what kind of application we get on it within my motion.
My second. It's time. The end of our discussion. All those in favor say I, opposed like sign. Motion passes. Uh, item number twenty five, discussing approval resigning a resolution for. Uh, V O C A grants to fund victims assistance project in the current. Twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three grant resolution must be updated since authorized official has changed, so it's. Uh, the only thing we're not, we're just authorizing uh sign it with the new county judge. So, any uh, is there a motion to do that? Is there a second? Uh, second, okay, uh, all is in uh in discussion.
And that. We didn't authorize it before for the county judge to sign.
It's in the minutes that we authorized it with. Didn't change your name.
No, we actually approved the twenty twenty three, twenty four uh to the prior. Mission court meeting. We approved a new one for twenty twenty three, twenty four. This one is, we're we're changing the names to the twenty twenty two, twenty three. Right, we've proven one, the the new one for next year, we approved. Uh, two two meetings ago, I believe it was. So is there a motion? Do we do that?
Yeah, we got a motion.
All right, and a second. All right, any further discussion? All of the favor say I, opposed by time, motion. On that, uh, item number twenty. Uh, six, discussing center approval of this year twenty twenty three budget amendments. Anybody want to discuss that? Okay, Commissioner McCray makes a motion to uh accept the budget amendments. Second, like Commissioner Pearson, all of uh any discussion? All of the favor say I, opposed like sign, motion passes. Item number twenty seven, discuss consider approval of December twenty twenty two financial investment report. Of county treasurer to be entered in the minutes of the commissioners' court. Is there a, is there a motion to accept so many counties report? There's a motion, is there a second? You look at it and they're not going to second. Is there a second to approve the charter report? All right, Commissioner Pearson, second, any discussion? All those in favor say I, all of the opposed like sign, motion passes. Item number twenty uh eight. Discussing consider monthly reports submitted by various offices and departments of the county government through the same. In the course minutes as a matter of record, we have received seven of eighteen reports so far. For February eighth is a good good start. So any further discussion? All of the favor, say I.
Oh, thank you, got a motion.
I don't have a motion, okay, is there a motion to accept? Uh, Commissioner Pearson, motion to have Commissioner Barton seconds, all of the favors say I, all of the opposed like sign. Motion passes. All right, at this point in time, we will close. We will go into a closed executive session at two thirteen. And I want to thank uh y'all for your patience and we're sitting through an hour and fifteen minutes of me talking. So and uh we will go executive.